Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Wycomica County Public Library. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, please, thank you. We need some new chairs up there, look at those things. Put that in the places. Look at those things.
It's from everybody waiting up their brother here.
If you could, good morning, if you could for the public state your name and position, both of you please, thank you.
I'm Andrea Bursler, I am the Executive Director for Wycomico Public Libraries.
I'm Tim McRoberts, I'm the Chief Public Service Officer at Wycomico Public Libraries.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you would like to start with an overview, I guess maybe of how things have changed and what the most critical matters are as far as any adjustments that were made.
Well, the library is doing well. We continue to see increased numbers of visits. Over the last three years, the trend has definitely been upward. We're seeing an increase in circulation, items that we loan out, with the biggest growth, of course, being items, digital items that we now loaned through our online catalog. They can be borrowed from websites, those include movies, music, books, audiobooks, graphic novels, and magazines. So we have a full library collection online now, as well as the print library that everybody knows and loves from our childhood. In addition to that, we've seen growth in both our economic development initiatives and our education initiatives. In the education field, we have Homework Help, which is running its second year, numbers continue to grow for that as well. We have volunteers from both the general public and the Board of Ed who come in on a weekly basis and assist students from all over Wycomico County in completing their homework assignments successfully and helping to increase their grades. We provide all the support that they need, including resources such as markers and paper, access to computers, printouts, all that sort of thing, anything they need to do their homework, we have there for them. Also, in addition to in the education piece, we are continuing to grow our STEM initiatives, robotics classes, Lego robotics classes, we will, running a computer club for the first time out at our center branch, which is taking ten at-risk students, teaching them how to build and code their own computer. So when it's done, they will walk out with a fully functioning computer, that, a fully functioning computer that they'll be able to program and reprogram and update, and they will have written all the code for the operating system. It's a great piece for them, it gives them work-related skills, it allows them to explore the world of coding and computer science in a way that they had not been able to do before, and we're thankful we've been able to do this with grant money from the Library Science and Technology Act, which is a federal grant money that came through the state. In addition to that, we are also running our Reader Van, which you will see in the budget here as part of the activities that we do. The Reader Van goes to daycares throughout Wycomico County, provides them with supplemental materials, a box of books and activities that are theme-based, which will help bolster the kindergarten prepared readiness skills that we are seeing struggling throughout the county. In economic development, we continue to run our Job Search Center. We see anywhere from thirty to fifty people a week in job search, looking for jobs, looking to improve their, their job situation. We do everything from setting up emails, helping them do the online applications, which are extensive. If you haven't tried one, even if you're not looking for a job, I encourage you to try it to see what these people are having to go through. In order to get a job at Bed Bath &amp; Beyond or Walmart, it takes forever to fill these applications out. We help them print their resumes, we help them set up interviews, we help them practice for interviews, anything that they need to do to get a job. And we've held several workshops in addition to the Job Search Center, helping people improve their skills in keeping a job. Because a lot of times people get a job and then they don't know what to do in order to keep it. And that's a life skill that we need to teach. In addition to all of that, we have Project Read, which is also in its first year, and that you will see in the budget directly, that's in the, in fact, I think it's on the cover sheet that I gave you in those, in those blue packets. Project Read is an adult literacy initiative. It, it works to reach out into the community for one-on-one tutoring for adults who cannot read, or who are illiterate in other basic life skill areas such as technology, health, finance, and family literacy. And what Project Read does is provide free confidential one-on-one tutoring for adults in the area to help them reach their personal goals, whether it's learning to read, whether it's learning how to set up and work in a budget, whether it's helping them learn how to teach their children to read, a whole set of life skills. And we have a coordinator for this position who spends her time assessing new students, coming up with a curriculum for them, helping their tutor work through the curriculum, and then recording their successes along the way. I talked to the Project Read coordinator just this morning, so I made sure I had the most recent notes, and she, right now, has thirty-four adult learners enrolled in this program with thirty tutors, so we are seeking more tutors. And these are individuals whose lives we are hoping that we can improve and change just by this simple one-on-one tutoring program. So that's sort of an overview of some of the things we're doing, it's not everything. And I know some of you came to our literacy breakfast, and we appreciate that. It was a very, we considered it a great success, it was a wonderful morning. And May twentieth is our block party, and you also have an invitation for that in your packet, and that's a free all-day event to celebrate reading and literacy and how much fun you can have with books. So I think that's, that's about as much summary as, as anybody can take at one sitting.
Any questions? John?
Andrea.
Yes.
I appreciate the information that you gave us, however, you requested operating expenses for two thousand and eighteen, and this that you presented to us shows one million three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, eight hundred and eighty-six. And the county's budget request was one million four hundred and eighty dollars, or one million four hundred and eighty thousand. So it's a ninety-one thousand dollars difference between what the county has proposed for you and what you showed us. Can we take ninety-one thousand dollars off?
Please don't. I think I can explain some of that.
Okay.
At least ten thousand, well, if you, if you see on the county budget page, on the MUNIS page.
Right.
There's a ten thousand four hundred and nine dollar figure.
Right.
That's removed from our budget after the budget is set up. It is our allocation for the energy savings.
Right.
So that's, you have to take that out of the one million four hundred and...
Okay.
Okay. There's also, if you'll notice on the MUNIS page, there's forty-seven thousand that's listed as capital grants.
Right.
That's actually our allocation out of the CIP, but it's listed here so that the county can on one page show everything that it's giving to help support the library.
Okay.
So this is a one-page, sort of a one-page summary. So that forty-seven thousand also is not really operating money, that's capital money.
I see.
And that will go towards matching state funds to allow us to replace ten HVAC units that are currently sitting in our building, and we pray they continue to operate, they're thirty-five years old or more.
You've talked about those in the past.
Yes, yes, it's the last piece of the building renovation that we feel has to be done. This year, we're working on the carpet and the public restrooms. In fiscal eighteen, we'll be replacing these HVAC units so that all of the building's climate controls are no more than fifteen years old. They were let go, I think, because, of course, originally, in the years, ten or twelve years ago, they were planning on replacing the building, so they, they just let them go. And now, you know, we have to replace them, so we're hoping this will be the last of this.
Okay, so that's fifty-seven thousand.
That's fifty-seven thousand. I'm trying to think, oh, the rest of it is the twenty-five for the capital for the car.
Okay.
So that's in there as well. If you look at the summary, the summary page I gave you on the front, you'll see the operating budget is one point two nine three, and then there's the ninety-five that we've asked for. And if you go backwards and add the ten thousand...
Gotcha, okay.
It comes out the other way, yes, yes.
Okay.
We kind of go at it from two different angles.
Right.
I apologize for that.
It's numbers.
It's all, it's all just numbers, that's right.
On the car, is that for a new car?
It's for us to replace, yes, we, we have a van that we use, in fact, we use it for the Reader's Van that I described, that's why I mentioned, when I mentioned that I said about being in the budget. The Reader's Van is supplemental to our bookmobile.
Mm-hmm.
The bookmobile services is primarily now almost all Title I schools. We have a couple of adult centers we stop at yet, but it's almost all Title I schools. It supplements the media centers for Title I, it allows the children to pick out books that they simply just want to read, as opposed to what's assigned. But in order to do that, we had to drop the daycares. And so we created the Reader Van in order to supplement the daycare piece so that we could continue to service the early literacy piece and help with kindergarten readiness. The van we're currently using is one that we got surplus from the local management board, it's a nineteen ninety-seven Dodge Caravan. And it's really on its last leg, we have to go out and hit the dashboard to get the lights to come on, you know, it's that kind of thing. The air conditioner works sometimes. So we, we actually wanted to replace it, and we're really pleased that our, it wasn't a formal request, but yet our request to the county executive was heard, and he realized how old this vehicle was, that, nineteen ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven.
Yeah.
And what do you mean by supplemental?
I'm sorry.
You said it was supplemental to the bookmobile.
The bookmobile, the bookmobile only services Title I schools and a couple of adult daycares. But years ago, the bookmobile was on the road six days a week.
It'd go in the neighborhood?
And we would go, we would have a few neighborhood stops, although we, we really don't do that much anymore because people don't use it that way. We would get two or three people who would visit. But it would also go to a lot of the preschools and the daycares in the community, and stop there for the kids. Most of them only have ten to fifteen children at most in a daycare. Now, we have two or three really large ones, okay? And, but the rest of them are much smaller. So we were expending an awful lot of money per student and per visit to run the bookmobile out there. The bookmobile's not a cheap vehicle, okay? So what we decided to do was make the bookmobile do the schools and get this van, which carries around totes, they're theme-based totes that are put together by my staff, who are highly trained. And the idea is that each tote is sort of a lesson plan for a whole month in a box. It has books, it has activities, it has music, it has manipulatives, all the things that these preschool teachers need in order to carry on several lessons about literacy and the theme. The theme could be seasons, or shapes, or all that sort of thing. We got a grant from PNC to buy the totes, but we didn't get a grant to get the vehicle. So when L&amp;B surplus this ninety-seven van, we took it thinking, well, we'll use this, it's really on its last leg. I, I can't tell you how many times we've run it over to Rhodes and had them try and service it.
Did you try to find any other surplus vans instead of getting a new van?
Nobody else, nobody else, I mean, all the other vans were as old as this one. We, we, we would have requested it if one came up.
There was no other options to get a...
Nobody offered any other surplus vans for us. So what we would like to do is take the money here and use that to purchase, like a Ford Transit, which is a small cargo van, that we could use for the service. I will tell you that when we started the grant for the Reader Van, we planned on twenty stops. We had PNC gave us a grant to buy forty totes and all the materials we needed for it, and we figured twenty stops should be pretty good. We were running this thing about three months, we were up to thirty stops. Then we went up to thirty-five stops, which is the most we could take with forty totes, because we have some of the totes that are being processed, they have to come back, be reinventoryed, make sure everything's in them. So we went back to find another grant for the Reader Van, the State Library provided us with a grant for fourteen thousand dollars to run this for another year, because they loved the idea of the, the concept of this project. The fact is that we are trying to address kindergarten readiness. But that money also isn't for a vehicle, it's for more totes, and to help with training, and to help with the salary for the individual running the ju, the program. We anticipate being over fifty stops before the end of the summer with all the totes that we're buying.
How many miles?
How many miles?
On that, on the seven?
Oh, you know, I didn't go out and look. I would venture a guess that it's well over a hundred and fifty thousand. It was owned by L&amp;B for quite a number of years, we've had it for like the last year and a half.
Now, since you're going to all these schools, are they contributing anything?
No, no, they're all Title I schools.
Well, I understand that, but they get caught up with the rates.
Yeah, but that's the Board of Ed, we don't, we're not, we're not linked with the Board of Ed, so we don't get...
We serve the people, that's why...
We are, but you know, for us, it's about the kids.
Oh, I understand, and for the schools, it's about the kids.
Oh, I know, I know, yeah. But no, we don't, we don't receive any Board of Ed money from that. It's, it's one of those things that it's just the right thing to do for us. The early literacy piece is huge.
Now, now with the internet being so popular, are people still checking out books?
Yes, I mentioned a little earlier, both of our, our visits, our visit counts, the people coming through the door at the downtown library, and our circulation numbers are both trending up.
Do you have on the internet there, people are using?
We do have the internet there, we also have a virtual library online, where that we loan ebooks, audiobooks, movies, music, the whole, everything we have in our physical library, we have in the virtual library at this point, that people can borrow for free. But a lot of people, estimates range from one-third to one-quarter of the population that do not have internet or computers, or do not know how to use them. So it doesn't matter what we put online, those people will never be able to access it. And, and those are the individuals who need it the most.
Andrea, how many, how many volunteers do you have?
Oh, gosh, that ranges any part of the year. Right, we, we average about four hundred volunteer hours a month over the three branches, and that includes the Friends Bookstore, the locations downtown, and then Pittsville and the center branch, as well as activities we go to, like Third Friday. You know, the block party will have a lot of volunteers for that. So we, we count volunteer hours, some of our volunteers are real regulars, they come every two weeks, they work in the bookstore for two hours. Some of them do community service, whether it's high school community service, we do take some court-appointed community service as well, we use them in the, in, in the processing departments and that sort of thing as well. So I would say at any one time, we probably have four or five volunteers in, in the three buildings, but we're ranging about three hundred fifty to four hundred hours a month in volunteering.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The, the ten thousand four oh nine...
Yes.
That you said is in but comes back out.
Yes.
Shouldn't that be listed as revenue on your budget? Who's paying that ten thousand four oh nine?
We are.
You pay it, but then it's...
It's in, it's in the budget, and we pay it back, we pay it back to the county, they just keep it.
But I thought you were saying that...
No, it's the other way, they, they count it in our income, but then they keep it to pay the energy savings plan that was put into place about four years ago, where they went through and replaced lights in all the buildings and...
Right.
Okay, so that's our assigned...
Contribution of the...
Thank you, contribution towards that. So it's included in our income, but then it comes right back out, we never see that money.
I, I do wonder about that, because, you know, we got, Steve did a report on that, what is it, a year ago or something like that, where the county wasn't receiving as much savings as this group that sold it to the county said they were.
Right.
You know, and, and I understand that, you know, you, you guys got part of the service, you pay for part of the savings, then that's what this is for. And, and I don't know if other agencies do that too, or not, maybe we should look at that again and see if, you know, the assumptions made in terms of the savings we're assessing you match up with the savings that the county actually received, you know, if that makes sense.
I can tell you, we didn't save that much on our energy bill, in fact...
Well, the county, the county didn't either.
Part, part of, part of the savings plan that they did was they were, they actually went in and put lower wattage lights in some of the spots of the library, which, since people want to read in the building, that didn't work so well. So we, we went back to Delmarva Power and said, we have a problem, can you help us with this? And they arranged for us to get a second program, where we went back and replaced all of our lights with LEDs. And we're actually saving more now than we were with the county program. And it cost us a fraction of it, but we're a nonprofit, so we were able to get into that program. Yeah, that's, we did not save ten thousand dollars on our utilities, I can tell you that.
ESG's argument was that it was within margin of error, is that correct?
How they calibrated the savings was different than they said we were calibrating the savings, yeah. Steve Roser worked very, very diligently with this group.
Yeah.
But couldn't, I don't think could come to much resolution.
Yes, Steve heard a lot from us when he came over for a turn around about that, he's like, Steve, tell me what's going on. But yes, I, I know we're not the only ones that, that kind of shook our head and said, this, this isn't working the way that we were promised. But we figured it's, you know, it's what the county calculated, so we just live with it.
So, but this is a legitimate expense to the library.
What, which one?
This, ten?
Yes, but we just, we never see the money. It, it, it's listed in our budget, it was like the parking, the parking was the same way, the parking was listed at the nine thousand for parking, was listed in our budget.
No, when I said...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You say you don't see the money, but it says here that you're spending that money, so that whatever, whatever that you're obligated as, as an expense...
But it's on the revenue side too, right?
But it's on the revenue side, it's an in and out. They say they give it to us and then, but we never see it, we, we don't write them a check back. The money's just allocated right off the top of our contribution. So when we get our monthly contribution, we calculate what the county says they're giving us minus ten thousand four hundred and nine dollars, and that's what the checks, and divided by twelve, that's what the checks are.
I guess the confusion is, I just don't, I mean, John had pointed out that there were some figures, I, I wouldn't understand why it wouldn't be included in this report. Because it, it sounds to me like it is a true expense.
It, it, yeah, well, it is. And you're, if you go, of course, I didn't give you a copy of the full budget, the full budget that the library board looks at shows the full income and the ten thousand less. When we did the cover sheet, I did it so that we could talk about actual numbers we were getting, which is the one million two hundred ninety-three thousand, that's what we actually receive from the county in, in payment form, in contribution form. And that's minus the ten thousand four hundred and nine. Last year, it was also minus nine thousand for parking. The county covered, up until two years ago, the county paid for us to get sixteen parking spaces behind the library. It never, it was not our expense, it was the county's expense. And then, two years ago, that was leveraged back to us, so that nine thousand also came off the top of our contribution. So what I asked the county to do this year is leave it in, we'll deal with our own parking spaces ourselves, we'll just pay them, you, you leave the money in our budget, we'll pay the parking ourselves. That gave me a little bit of leverage to start negotiations with the city, because now we're giving the city sixteen thousand a year to park, and that's a big number. And so that is, I'm hoping that that will allow me to maybe talk to the city a little about their contributions to the library with, with that kind of number.
And just to clarify, the city doesn't contribute at all to the library?
Nothing, no.
The city charges you for parking and...
And for water and sewer, yeah. We, we, we give back to the city, we pay the city for water and sewer and parking about twenty-six thousand a year.
So with, with the pending development that's going to be going on in that parking lot, have you explored that, see how that's going to affect the library and the parking for the patriot, patrons, and...
Yeah.
And even the employees for that matter?
Well, the, hopefully the employee parking will be a temporary disruption, because my understanding is that they're, the plan is to put parking garages back behind the library again, and we've already talked to the city about making sure the spots we're in now, we get first dibs on getting them back if that garage ever goes, ever gets built. The ones for the patrons, it's going to be a disruption. And we've had a couple of conversations already with Mayor Day and with individuals from the Parking Authority about the two-hour parking that we currently get for Lot One being transferred over to the parking garage, because it doesn't exist in the parking garage at this point. I think they're agreeable to considering it, I don't know what it's going to come out to. And since libraries in the state of Maryland are charged to counties, not cities, it creates a real interesting conversation when we go talking to the cities, because legally, they have no responsibility for the library. But we would like to think that we bring an awful lot to the city of Salisbury, and that, that maybe the city ought to be a little more engaged. The mayor is very open to discussing it, we haven't come up with anything solid, there's nothing in writing yet, but it's a conversation we are having with the city as far as the parking, because the parking's a big thing, there are parking spaces reserved for the library now in the parking garage, but they're not free yet. And that's where we're going, is that two-hour free parking is huge. So we've been discussing, could we do that? Could we validate, if you came into the library, could we validate and you get the two-hour free parking? How could we do it so it's a benefit to the city and the library both? I think until they actually put a shovel in the ground over there, though, it's going to be tougher than to come up with a decision, until they see some development.
I don't see your, I don't see your patrons being as anxious to use parking garages as they are.
No, I don't either, but you know, there's nothing I can do about it, I haven't money to buy parking.
I know, I know. Well, you know, and, and I would hope the city would work with you, since they were
very anxious when there was talk, you know, a few years ago about leaving downtown and going somewhere else, man, the city administration sure was hollering about that, so...
I, I, I agree completely. And I can, I tell you that we bring about twenty-four million in economic impact every year, and I would wager that at least seventy percent of that is felt by the city and the city residents. So I think it's a pretty powerful argument.
And then that's what I want to touch on, the same thing, you're talking about economic development, the library at its current location is a drawing card for downtown Salisbury, and that's something that they are very interested in, is bringing more people downtown.
That's correct.
So you've got an ace in the hole.
We are the anchor store, we are the anchor store for downtown. We bring anywhere from three hundred and fifty to five hundred people a day on average to that building. That's our people counts for the day.
And I used to work out of the building across the street, and I would see floods of people in and out all day long, up until closing.
It's true, we have people waiting when we open the doors in the morning, and we are asking people to leave when we close the doors in the evening. It's a vital community service, and, and you're right, it's a great negotiating tool for the city. They know we're the anchor store, they know we still are the biggest draw downtown. But I want to make sure that this is all a positive negotiation with them, that we, we come out where that both, both sides are able to say, this was good for the library, this was good for the community, this is, you know, this is a positive thing. I know that's a little bit of being optimistic, but that's kind of where we're headed with this. So that's why we're still talking.
You'd mentioned about the success you were having with helping people fill out applications and things like that. Why, do you work in concert with like the one-stop job market or any other agencies?
We do, in fact, the Job Search Center is funded by a grant from Lower Shore Workforce Alliance.
Oh, okay.
And they run the one-stop job market out in the Tri-County Building as well. So we coordinate, our staff is trained by them. And whenever we hold workshops on, like, filling out applications and that sort of thing, we always coordinate with them to make sure we're not overlapping, and we also then promote their workshops and they promote our workshops, so...
And they, you said they, they supply you with the grant?
They do, they provide us with twenty, I believe it's twenty-four thousand dollars a year to keep the one, the, the Job Search Center downtown running. It doesn't cover all the expenses of running it, but it, it, it's a sizable chunk, and it covers most of the salaries for our two part-time staff members who run that center, keep it open five, six days a week.
And you talked about the kids and the, and the computer, things like that, how about the M4 reactor group with Kevin Justice?
We, we've talked with Kevin. Kevin's work is still a work in progress, and I, I think that they're very focused on their efforts at the Tri-County Building at this point. They have a satellite office in the downtown library where that we, they've been helping us with our 3D printer and doing some Makerspace stuff. Right now, we've actually been partnering with the University of Maryland Extension Office, and one of their staff members, who is a physics professor at the, at UMS, is teaching the course for us, and we pay them a small stipend for his time, it's much less than we would have to pay him if we hired him. And he is really the expert in robotics on the shore. So, in fact, he will be the regional coordinator for you, for the Extension Office, for STEM activities, I think, starting next month. So we, we do, we reach out to partners whenever we can, there's no need for us to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, you may want to keep in touch with Bill Burke at Salisbury University, because Salisbury University had a forum the other day, last week, in reference to entrepreneurship, and how the university could help with entrepreneurship and, and economic development within Wycomico County. And one of the, one of the issues that came up was the fact that entrepreneurship seemed to be so scattered, and... because Salisbury University had a forum the other day, last week, in reference to entrepreneurship and how the university could help with entrepreneurship and, and economic development within Waukesha County. And one of the, one of the issues that came up was the fact that entrepreneurship seemed to be so scattered. And efforts for economic development, all the agencies were very scattered.
That's true.
And he took that into note, especially with the Entrepreneurship Center downtown that the university's going to be, going to have. I think it was pretty, pretty well-understood that there was a need to try to coordinate all the efforts. So you may want to touch base with him to make sure you're part of whatever they, if they develop.
I, I will. Yeah, we've talked about, we've talked to Bill Burks before, but I haven't recently, so that's a great suggestion. Thank you. I'll make sure to, to contact him again.
Okay. Any other questions? Andrea, Tim, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. Did you have any other questions for us?
Um, no, I don't think so. We're hoping we see you all on the twentieth. And I appreciate all of you who came out to the breakfast. That was?
Good time.
And just to let you all know, so you can have a date, twenty nineteen, we will be, we will be celebrating one hundred and fifty years of library service to this community. Between the subscription library that started just two years after the county did through the free library that we have currently, that's one hundred and fifty years of library service in this community, which makes it one of the oldest communities in Maryland with library service. So we'll be planning some events for that time. We'll have more details a little later. But just so that you can be aware, that's, that's quite a feather, both in our hats, but also in the county's hats, that, that the county fathers at that point realized that libraries were important and necessary. So thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good job, Jim.
So we're, we're going to take a recess until eleven, I believe. That's, we'll have recreation parks and tourism coming in at eleven.